The meeting of Somerville Planning Board for July 9th, 2025 will please come to order. Adequate notice of this meeting as required by the OPAH Public Meeting Act has been provided. A copy of the notice specifying the date, time, and location was one published to the Courier-News, two posted on the bulletin board outside of Borough Hall, three posted to the municipal website, and four given to the Clerk Administrator. This meeting is a judicial proceeding. Any questions or comments must be limited to the issues of the Board may legally consider in reaching a decision, and the decorum appropriate to a judicial hearing must be maintained at all times. Roll call.
Andrea Dare.
Here.
Chris Addicks.
Here.
Art Aikens.
Here.
Larry Cleveland.
Here.
Jason Craska is excused.
I'm here.
Oh, sorry. Sorry about that.
Goodbye.
Jason Craska.
Here.
John Manilio is excused. Barry Van Horn is also excused. Mayor Gallagher.
Here.
Councilmember Vroom.
Here.
Chairperson Warner.
Here. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we need a motion for approval for the minutes from June 25th.
So moved.
Second.
Art Aikens. Larry Cleveland.
Yes.
Jason Craska.
Yes.
Mayor Gallagher.
Yes.
Chairperson Warner.
Yes. All right, next we have our resolution for Avalon for the amendment of Condition C imposed into a final might on the final major site plan approval for the Phase Two residential development and amended minor fi- major final might major site plan approval for the Phase One residential development to incorporate additional signage.
So moved.
Second.
Larry Cleveland.
Yes.
Jason Craska.
Yes.
Mayor Gallagher.
Yes.
Chairperson Warner.
Yes. All right, next up, we do have our concept hearing for Gateway East Somerville LLC. As they're getting themselves set, I just wanted to kind of give a little background here. This has been a three-year endeavor. I know I have not always been there for that three years, but it has been a three-year endeavor, back and forth with multiple revisions, listening to us going back and forth on the redevelopment committee, so it's nice to see you here again for a fin- another concept review.
Good evening, members of the Board. My name is Mike O'Grodnick. I'm an attorney at Savo Shaw Law Firm here in town on behalf of Gateway East Somerville. We're here tonight on an amended conceptual app- application for the redevelopment of several commercial uses into a mixed-use development, including inclusionary apartment complex with ground floor commercial space, 488 space, parking garage on a property located at Block 64, lots 8, 10, and 11.01, and Block 65, lots 1, 2, 2.01, 3, and 4 on the borough tax map. This is located, as I'm sure you're aware, at 1921 to 23 Meadow, 130, 136, 144, 148, 158 East Main, and 37 Hamilton Streets. Subject property is in the ECB2 and ECB3 zoning districts. With me tonight, I have Matthew Caruso on behalf of the applicant to provide about a less than 10-minute presentation. You recall, we were here about a year ago with the first application, and Mr. Caruso is going to go over the updates to the plan since we've last met and considering all the conversations we've had with the borough in the last 12 months. So, Mr. Caruso, can you swear?
Yeah, Mr. Caruso, it's not a public hearing, but Mike will just swear. I should testify about your experience with the two to four children.
Hello? Oh, cool. For the record, I don't know if you need this on the record, Matthew Caruso of the sponsorship entity. I hope that everybody had a fun, sun-filled Fourth of July. We're excited to be back in front of you again. As was mentioned, you know, we've had a series of these meetings over the last several years pertaining to this project, notably including the conceptual hearing in June of last year and a meeting with the RD Committee in December of last year. So, over the course of those hearings, we received valuable feedback of concerns that were raised about the project. Those mostly stemmed around a few main things. One was emergency service access in the event of a flood. Bulk height and density of the building was another topic. Community-centric uses for the project, and finally affordability. So we've worked over the last six to 12 months to address those concerns. We met with the redevelopment committee again in April of '25 this year to present an updated plan and ultimately received favorable feedback and support. So I'm here before you tonight to give a brief overview of those changes and then open this up for questions and comments. Okay, so regarding the emergency service access of the site, what we were able to do in the last six months is actually contract the purchase of an additional parcel located at 37 Hamilton Street. This parcel sits up into the hill on the backside of the project on Veterans Memorial, and the addition of this to our site plan will actually raise the high point entry of the site 10 feet above the DEP-approved regulation and eight feet above what was previously proposed in the site plan when you last saw it. We proposed to use this site solely for the dedication of emergency service access and egress to and from the property. What this does is it unequivocally allows unimpeded access to and from the site in the event of a flood. We should note that this project remains fully approved by the DEP. We're in receipt of a flood hazard permit for this site plan. Redevelopment of the area will actually increase flood storage capacity at the site by removing existing structures that sit within the floodplain. And in addition, redevelopment here will actually remediate historic fill that dates back to this area, particularly in portions that the Somerville municipality actually used to use for a waste site. So that was the emergency services that we addressed. We think it's a fantastic addition to the project. In addition to that, and secondly, we've addressed height, density, and bulk of the project. So mainly, we've reduced unit count, unit count from 285 units to 243 units in this iteration, and the way that we were able to accomplish that is actually removing the entire top floor of the building. So the building is now reduced from five stories to four stories, as you see presented today. With that, we were actually also able to shift units around as they appear on the corner of Veterans Memorial and East Main Street. This was a concern of the Board because as you approached the building, you wanted to be able to see predominantly residential and not exposed parking elements. That said, we've done all of this and maintained an abundant 2.0x parking ratio, which is very significant for this part of town. And then lastly, one of the elements that we added that is one of my favorite elements is, you can see it on the screen, we're calling it the cornerstone element. It sits on the corner of East Main and Veterans Memorial. What this architectural feature does is really create a landmark. We feel signifying the entrance and the extension of East Main Street to Somerville. This landmark creates a welcome that I think captures the essence of what we're trying to accomplish, not only with this project, but the redevelopment plan for this area itself. It's a great addition. We think it shows very well, as you can see in the renderings provided, and we're excited to implement it. Thirdly, just regarding community-centric uses, we've been working with the redevelopment committee and Colin Driver to find public incentives in order to implement a performing arts center here at this building. We're proud to be able to find a use for the site for the performing arts center here. We think it'd be a fantastic addition into town, frankly, something that the town might be lacking right now, but we could use the space for that. And from our perspective, we think it's a very creative use of the space that isn't the traditional retail on the ground floor of a multifamily building that frankly has struggled to lease in other parts of the town. We're excited to add that. And then lastly, affordability. We remain committed to finding ways to address affordability at this site and in the Somerville community. That includes dedicating portions of units to low or moderate income housing, portions of units to the potential of hav- having workforce housing, and then lastly, the potential for development fees contributed towards Somerville's Affordable Housing Trust Fund. All that said, we've made major strides in the present- presentation that you see today. We're excited to present it to you. I think going forward, our plan is to hopefully apply for a renewal of the redevelop or designation, move towards finding a way to incorporate updated language that conceptually allows for this plan and the redevelopment language within the town, and then lastly, moving towards a site plan application. We've brought Craig Stires of the engineering team here tonight, Dave Minno of Minno and Wasco Architects, who can offer detailed testimony on questions and comments, but we really look forward to continuing to plan this project as a public-private partnership with the town. And as the mayor mentioned at one of our meetings in the last year, finding ways to make this an accoladed, an accolade decorated project that the public can be proud of, and I think a lot of these elements secure that tonight. So the effectuation of this development really will accomplish the decades-long redevelopment vision for this area, and we're excited to make it happen. Thank you.
Could you do me a favor and, and just kind of walk through each of the slides for the public that, that may be watching on TV? Just kind of, just give an over, a brief overview on each, each one of the slide decks.
Yep, I think, I think this is a good one. So this is a side by, or top and bottom, whatever you want to call it, a before and after showing what we proposed in December of 2024, before we, or before we received the comments and feedback that we did, and then what we've since changed it to. So you can see from the top going down, the ghosted area on the bottom picture, that was the old height of the building. We've now reduced it an entire floor. If you look towards the, I guess, right side of the picture, you can see that landmark element that I've been referring to. It's this cornerstone facing towards the corner of East Main and Veterans Memorial. In addition to that, you could see compared to the top, there was parking elements in the December 2024 plan that you could see on the bottom left of the top photo. That has been eliminated in, in the bottom photo where you can now see residential units planned. I'll just keep moving forward. These are similar renderings, just showing different perspectives. Here's the backside of the building. Similar concept, it shows in the ghosted areas on the bottom photo what the height used to be as we proposed it. It points out certain things. We've added a park or, or elements to soften the green space at the corner of the building to the right side of the screen in the bottom photo. We've also eliminated a lot of the parking elements for the right-hand corner, as you can see in the comparison between the top and the bottom. And all in all, the, the height reduction really just decreases the mass and, and the appearance from the building from that corner. We just have various renderings going forward of different angles when you're within different parts of the town. This is looking east from Main Street downtown. It's actually a great view, you know? It just creates this, this continuance of the Main Street, we believe. This is a good overview, just showing you a satellite image of the acquisition of the parcel that I mentioned at 37 Hamilton Street. So in the black, within the black shaded, that was the amalgamation of the properties that we had previously had. So those were seven, the black outlined parcels represented seven different parcels. The red new one is the addition. That parcel itself is a non-conforming lot that actually sits higher up into the hill, so there's not much that you can do with it as it exists. The implementation of it into our site plan does raise the access on that high point of the site to a maximum of 10 feet above the DEP-approved regulation. That's what this, this depicts, as well as the next slide, it just shows you an aerial. And then moving forward, we did, we are, we're aware that electric vehicle charging stations have become a concern for the town, and we've taken steps to conceptually get ahead of it now without having the full-fledged details of, of what you would work through in architectural planning and site planning. But the good thing about this building, as is loosely depicted on this screen, is there will be two floors of parking garage, so there will be a lower-level parking and an upper-level parking, each separated by fireproofed, or fire-rated concrete slabs. So on the bottom-most portion of the project, you could actually find strategic areas to place EV chargers that are not located in densely populated parking areas, that are adjacent to open-air access of the garage in the case that you do need to put out a fire. And then lastly, it's not below any residential space. Anything above it is concrete, so it protects residents and other usable space, particularly also away from the commercial space on the ba- on the ground floor on Main Street. So tho- those are the last slides. We've also incorporated just a mock floor plan, just showing how the units would be laid out. There would be a many space located in the middle with, with a deck, really creating a, a very amenitized project for the community. Thank you.
Questions from the Board?
Yes, I know that from the last time, the lower parking level was going to be a dual use, like it was going to be able to retain attention base and like water to help with the flooding. But if cars are parked there, how do you get those cars that are in the flood zone? How do you tell people, hey, come get your car? Because if somebody parks their car on Thursday and they go away to Boston, and then Saturday is a storm, they come home on Tuesday and their car is under 10 feet of water. Now what?
Before I start answering these questions, I'd like to call up Craig from our team, who is the civil engineer and the, and the planner of the site plan, just so I don't speak out of tune. But regarding that issue, there will actually be no parking or vehicles parked on the actual ground in this area. The structure of the building itself, and you can actually probably see it on one of these slides, it sits.
I misunderstood what they talked about the last time. I apologize.
It sits, Craig, correct me if I'm wrong, four to five feet above the ground, that first concrete slab?
Yes, I do. Yeah, Larry, if you look on the lower left, you can see those, the black shaded area right there?
Yes.
That's open, completely open. So that is, and then that, the square boxes, the next level up, that's the first level of parking. So there will be no parking on the ground. All parking spaces will be above the flood elevation. So you have first floor of parking above the flood elevation, second floor is obviously even more, and then the driveways just off the screen there that comes out on the Veterans Memorial above the flood elevation. And then, like Matt said, Matt, go back to that grassed one. Go back a couple.
Oh, sorry.
One more. See that grassed area right there?
Yes.
That's going to be the emergency access. So you can see that the com- one component of the, of the building right there over the trees. So the drive is going to go down that grassed area, which is 10 feet above the, the maximum flood elevation. So to answer your question, there will be, they can leave their car there, and they can go to Boston and come back, and their car will still be there.
Okay.
So.
I was just concerned about that.
Yeah.
I appreciate that. And as an environmental board member, you're going to put more trees on there, right? A lot more trees, right, to soften the blow, right? Yes. Put more trees, yes.
We intend to put more street trees.
Yes.
And I, there are, I mean.
And trees on a property, that doesn't, you don't have to not do that, that's okay. Shade trees are nice.
Yeah, and I think that's been discussed previously that although we, you know, whether we put actual street trees on Main Street, there'll be components where there's benches, so they may be potted plants as opposed to actually in the ground.
And movable, if necessary.
Exactly, yeah.
Okay. I, I also noticed that from the original proposal, the, the lowest level was elevated. Now it's a little lower, like the entire plaza. At one point, it seemed to be higher. Like if you look at the top picture and you look at the bottom picture, you guys lowered that exactly.
Yeah, I think that probably stayed the same elevation, maybe it was just a perspective thing by taking.
The wall looks like it's just lower.
Right.
Uh, yeah, that might have just been changes in, in different perspectives of the rendering.
Oh, and that, and that's fine, it just makes it so that it's not like up on a podium, the building is a little lower.
We can certainly explore ways to make sure there's a more prominent look on it.
No, it doesn't have to be, I think that's.
No, I think he's saying he likes it.
Oh.
In Larry language, that means he likes it.
Sometimes I like things. I'll let you know.
I have a quick question, just curious. I mean, the building looks nice, I'm glad you lowered the, from the fifth floor to the down-low four stories. That corner, as it is now, when, because I come down Veterans, turn right onto Main Street. Basically, I have to almost come into Main Street so I can see my sideline to the left. Is that corner going to be clear so when I'm making a right turn, I'm not in the crosswalk to see what cars are coming?
Can you repeat that, just so I make sure I'm understanding the question?
So, I'm sitting at Veterans and Main.
Right, facing Main Street.
Make a right turn onto Main Street. As it is now, when I go to make a right turn, because of the, what's there now, I have to almost go in, I have to go into the crosswalk so I can look to my left and make sure there's no cars coming, because I can't see because there's bushes and everything there. With this, the way you have your cornerstone here, will that be a hindrance?
I think the best way to approach this is to also have this included in a traffic study or with a line of sight with an architect, but I can say that if there are ways to play with that platform and lowering it, like this gentleman just mentioned, it should add and aid within the line of sight of that turn. Of course, whatever we do plan ultimately needs to be approved by an engineer and a traffic engineer for that area, and I'm, I'm looking forward to getting into that detail more as we get into the site planning. Yeah.
Yeah, you know what, and I'm, look, I, I agree with you. I think there'll actually be better visibility with something like this.
I'm thinking so, but I was just asking.
Yeah, because it, because the bushes stick far out.
They're wide out, you can't see.
Yeah, I think you're going to have a better visibility.
The bushes are higher than what I'm looking at what this wall would be.
That was my question.
Yeah.
Yeah, so you're saying like you would be that car right there?
Yes.
Yes.
And you, when you look up Main Street, you have the bushes at what, what used to be the Pizza Hut.
Yes.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, I mean, right now, that, that walkway is probably five feet, and I think we're probably looking at closer to 10 feet, so I think it will be further back. But yeah, I think, obviously, we'll have to address that as part of the site plan. Mike will make sure of that.
Yeah, looking at it, just at the area of it now, with the way it's rounded, it should be another like 10 feet of extra line of sight, approximately, looking at it. And then we need to get that tree cut back.
Don't say that to Larry.
No, that, that's, that's what you need to do. It has to be a safe line of sight. It's not necessarily a tree, it's the bushes that are down low. That tree is not causing the traffic.
No, it's the bushes that are there.
It's the bushes that are in your face.
Yeah.
Everybody sees that.
Other comments?
Yeah, I.
I know you're itching.
Yeah, well, I'm waiting for everybody to go.
I know.
It's, I'm trying to, yeah.
All yours, Mayor.
So, so a few things. I think what you've put together, you've listened extremely well to what this board has said in the past and, and to what the redevelopment committee has put forward as well. You had a big challenge in front of you, assembling all these pieces. It's like a jigsaw puzzle with a couple of pieces gone, and, and you've managed to put that together, and, and you've stayed at the table to make something that, as, as I had said in a previous meeting, that everybody can be proud of. This part of town is a gateway. Right now, it's not a great-looking gateway. So, you know, we are trying to, to regenerate that, that end of town, the east end of town, and it needs, it needs a little bit of help. It's gone through a number of floods, and it's chased businesses out over the course of two decades worth of floods. And, you know, we have, we, we had created a redevelopment plan that went through a number of different iterations, and you've taken that redevelopment plan and you've understood it, and you've put it to paper. So, having done that, you've addressed a lot of the floodplain issues that this committee had previous, this board previously had, as well as the redevelopment committee. Emergency services access is paramount, because we know it will flood down there again, but what you've done is given the ability to take the building out of the water. It's out of the water, and you've still maintained that emergency access that is required, because without that, it's, it's a non-starter. Coming down a floor, just the, the density, the bulk, the, you know, when you come around, when you come down Main Street and the first thing you see is that gateway, bringing it down a floor actually adds to it. You know, sometimes bigger isn't always better, and, and having this big massive structure is not the best. I think what you've done by creating that architectural element, that corner architectural element, and, and bringing it down a level and reducing the number of units, let's be honest, it, it actually helps the, the look, feel, and massing of the building. Very happy to hear that you're, you know, you're intrigued and interested in pursuing a, a performing arts center, a, some type of public use that we can both work together towards. I think that's awesome. It's something that the borough has been eagerly working towards. And your, your willingness for, to participate in our affordable housing, because we all have that responsibility, and, you know, your willingness to, to, to work towards meeting that, that ordinance, I mean, it's brand spanking new, but your, your willingness to meet that says a lot. I think you've done a great job in, in putting this together. I think there's been a lot of time, and you've stuck to it. There's been a lot of push and pull, but I think at the end of the day, it, it made a better concept, and I'm eager to see this, this move forward. The only thing that's missing on that architectural element on the corner, you need a big old American flag right at the top.
Consider it done.
And, and I think that completes that gateway, so I think it was well done, so thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments from the Board?
I just had a couple of just questions. All the mechanicals are going to be on the rooftop? All mechanicals, air conditioning, venting?
Yes, including backup generators that we plan to have at the site.
That's what I was going to ask you next, you're going to have it on-site?
Yep.
Okay.
Just a, again, for the emergency service concerns, you know, in the event of a flood, people still need power, so we are committed to planning that.
That's a shelter in place.
Mm-hmm.
Love for you.
Yeah. Anything else from the Board? All right, I am going to open it up to the public for any comments that you might have on this concept plan. Hearing none, I will close the public session. I'm just going to close and say I agree with Mayor Gallagher. It has been a pleasure to, I know not on your end, but on our end, to have an applicant that is willing to really truly listen to what we have concerns for, and this project is absolutely beautiful. I think you've done a fantastic job on it, and I look forward to it, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Okay, moving on to, first, we have the resolution area of need.
You know what, can we just do the adjournment of the application that's supposed to be?
Oh, yeah, sorry, I forgot, I already crossed it off, that's why I forgot about it, sorry. Just on the notice that we do have, we are adjourning the Somerville Estate LLC, 157 East Main Street. That will be for August 13th. Unfortunately, they had some conflicts with their professionals, so they will be heard on August 13th.
Microphone?
Are you not working?
Other notices necessary? Whoa. And Ryan, you confirm we don't need an extension from them, right, for August 13th?
We do not need an extension, but they did say that they were going to renotice just on their own accord.
Oh, they did? Okay.
Okay. So back to the resolution from Borough Council, recommend asking the Board to look and reexamine whether certain blocks in, this is the.
West End.
West End, I, I know, not so many. West End redevelopment area is in, can be added in as an area of need of redevelopment.
Can we get like a landmark understanding of what we're talking about?
Yeah, so, I'm sorry.
No.
I'll sh- I'll stop.
Please do, no, please, please do.
So, so the, and that's a good point, Larry, the, the. The, the Borough Council took up, at, obviously at the recommendation of, of the planning board at, at one point. We heard the concept for the granites building. This is in relation to that. So it's looking at the blocks and lots that are, that comprise the granites building and the adjacent properties in and around. Does it mean?
New Street?
I don't know if it extends across New Street. But it, it's, it's that, it's not a triangle, but that block. And it doesn't mean that all will be included. It just means that this is the area the Borough Council says, have a look, see what you come up with, and then come back to us with your recommendations. So, and it's not a new area, it's just extending. So we have the existing West Main Street redevelopment area. Would be extending it across the street to the next block. Yeah.
I believe it does go across New Street.
Does it?
For the reexamine of what they're looking for.
Yeah, but again, it's, it's not, it's up to this body to make a recommendation as to what should, should or should not be included.
What's our next step then?
Get cracking.
So Mike will be a part, you know, we'll be using Mike for this a lot, this member on the, we have that where we said we were gonna start reexamining anyway our redevelopment plans, master plans, this just falls in line. It kinda just kickstarts and gives us a definitive of what, one of the things that we really need to start on. So that will be, and I know the timeline, it, don't see Colin, I know the timeline has been fine tuned and I'm hoping for the next planning board, you guys get a copy of that. You know, we weren't, didn't have a chance to revisit it outside of this, just to make sure that we like that timeline and we were waiting for this as well. So, with that, then you'll start to see, that's where, that's the next step.
Are we also thinking about taking another look at the Eastern Business District?
Yes.
Because we have what we just saw.
Yep.
But across the street, the world is different than it was.
Yeah.
I think.
Twenty years ago.
I think, Larry, once you see this timeline, so the timeline incorporate and it has listed the master plan, every redevelopment plan we have, because there's not that, we have Gaston Avenue too, that needs to be redo, you know, Kirby Avenue, all of them need to. But based on, to your point, what this timeline takes into consideration is what we see needs to be looked at first. So, and it, it doesn't mean this timeline is we're gonna start one and have to end that before we start the next one. So that's what this time.
You mentioned that two weeks ago.
Yeah, so this timeline, I think, will help with a lot of that to understand how there might be three that we're working on at the same time, but we're towards the tail end of one, in the middle of another, and the beginning of the next. So, we're not waiting, you know, and saying, oh, we gotta finish one before we get to the next one.
Yeah, we're not starting one and working through it to finish and then starting another. It's, they're gonna be in tandem.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
And the master plan is also something we have to look at?
Yes.
Going forward?
All of us.
Yes. And the first step for that was, it's gonna be distributed to, which we're gonna discuss is gonna be distributed to each of the different committees, so historical, environmental, each recreational, they'll get their parts to start looking at as well so that we.
That's what the thumb drive was also for.
Yes, so that those pieces can also, you know, it, it gives us that kickstart because they, it's, they need to review it. So instead of waiting on us to say, okay, now we're ready for it, they can start looking at that.
So, so, yeah, so what's been done in the past, Larry, I mean, you know, you, you've sat here, what we've done is typically, we've handled it and brought them in and said, tell us your thoughts. We're doing it a little different this time, we're saying, here you go. You, you, this is your area, come back to us with what your recommendations are and then we'll have a look at it. So it's, it's kind of, it's a, we're kinda reversing it a little bit.
So, the thumb drive that you gave us, I can start to share it with the environmental people for the parts?
I think Mike is gonna do that separately.
Oh.
The, yeah, the, the concept is we're, we're actually going to bring the constituencies in to a meeting, distribute. Yes, first.
Okay.
To kinda give everybody a game plan.
Yes.
Timelines of expectations and, and what we're looking for back. You know, redline documents so we can see what revisions, changes were made, so the board can see what revisions, changes were made. So that we don't have everybody kinda going off in their own direction.
Yes.
We, we need to corral it a little bit, so that's, that's next on the list.
And the thumb drive to clarify was, is for each of us as board members, it has every plan on it. So that's what we can continue to use to reference as we get to those elements.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, and if they, you know, and if they wanna start looking at it, just to, the, the master plan's on the website, so they, they can, they can take a look at it.
Okay, can you just make a motion?
A motion in a second to authorize Mike to undertake the study of that, those particular lots in connection with redevelopment statutes.
So moved.
Second.
Andrea Dare. Chris Addix.
Yes.
Art Akins.
Yes.
Larry Cleveland.
Yes.
Jason Kraska.
Yes.
Mayor Gallagher.
Yes.
Councilmember of room.
Yes.
Chairperson Warner.
Yes. All right, next up is, we have the draft, revised draft ordinance for the EV charging stations. Mike, I'll let Mike take over in a minute just to give an overview. Mike took the thoughts and comments that we had at the last meeting, incorporated them, made some of those adjustments. So Mike, and you wanna, I think it's all the red, right?
Yeah, the, the red is, it was revised, we had read before, but I drilled down on the comments received from the planning board, which were to clarify what a single-use parking deck is, what's a mixed-use to clarify exactly what we're talking about. And then there was discussion about, well, on the surface parking lot, the fire, the hydrant, what's the location? So I met with Bobby Lynn more than once regarding this. So you'll see range given for the fire hydrant, three thirty, seventy-five to a hundred feet is the range for the surface parking lot. And you'll see that you can be a party wall attached on two sides and still be considered a, a single-use deck, which is similar to what's been in town, the county deck, two sides. And then it's clarification on if you had another building, what distance constitutes another connection to clarify. The whole idea is so that the OEM and the fire department can fight something and get access to it, it's not impeded by other structures. And that's why you see the fire lane, 30 feet. The idea is so they can get around the structure to do what needs to be done. And I, I do believe this, this reiteration addresses, well, the planning board just commented on, addresses the, the, the charge from the last meeting.
Anybody have any extra comments, additional comments?
I just had two quick questions.
Go ahead.
And it's probably just clarifications. When we're talking about the side of the adjoining building not being, it's not considered to be 30 feet from a structure if it's separated by a, a road, alley, or fire lane, is the intent, even if, if that separation by that is less than 30 feet, it's still okay, it's still not considered adjoining? Do we need to say that that separation needs to be at least 30 feet? So if you've got, for instance, a roadway, it's only 10.
You don't have to say, but it, it, the exception is, it's 30 feet if you don't have the roadway. If it's less, it's to what the fire marshal, it could be 20 feet if you have that. Right?
Is that the intention? The way, so if the side of the adjoining building is located within?
Yes, unless it is separated at a grade, so it's saying it's 30 feet separation unless you have an access road around it that complies with the fire marshal, so that could be less than 30.
So that's the roadway.
Okay, satisfying, okay, so the roadway can be 20 feet, but it allows for the fire truck to come towards.
Correct, then it becomes a fire inspection or fire marshal.
It would've been years and the fire marshal says the fire lane has to be, right now it's typically 10 feet. So they say with, we want 20 feet works for us. Well, that satisfies it then because you have the fire lane road. It doesn't necessarily have to be a public road, it just needs to meet the access for the fire department to address.
Okay.
Yep.
So that's why it's written that way, it's 30 feet.
That makes total sense now, yep.
However, if you have a fire lane that meets the requirements, it could be 12 feet if they're comfortable with it.
Yep.
It's just getting flexibility.
Absolutely, it makes total sense. And then page nine, five B, I just think we might wanna consider saying after the word feasible, put as determined by the board hearing the application, so we just know that.
Oh, yes, I think we have to clarify that, yep.
So other than that, I mean, I'm, I'm good.
So from my perspective, when we look at the, the application that we just heard a little bit about, right? That's a number, that's a, that's a number three, right? That's a mixed-use structure because it's underneath, right? Is that, did I read that right? Okay. So I mean, that's not even feasible if this gets approved, right? Like, help me understand that a little bit because it's right from the get-go. So, I'm not gonna repeat what I said before, but I'm not sure if we're solving the problem and I think maybe we're just putting hurdles in front of developers.
I, I, I agree with you, but I think what they said was the, the EV parking there, they had that green space above it.
Yep, yep.
No residential above.
Yep.
So I think that actually falls under a different area.
I see where you're going, yeah. So, but by definition, this is a mixed-use structure. We'd have to say, well, mixed-use structure, but it's located in a place that makes it okay.
Six needs a clarification then. Item six on page nine.
Yeah.
Item six, that needs a better clarification to point to what you're saying.
Yeah.
They were saying that where they're intending to put these parking spaces.
Yes.
Yes, it's in the deck, but no residential above, so that's.
Yeah, so I'm, so when I, when I heard that and I saw that, I'm like, ooh, that's a good idea and that makes sense to me, right? But by this definition, this is prohibited.
I think this is now a question for the board, we've been here before. What does the board wanna do? Do they wanna allow it or not allow it? Because I hear your point.
Oh, yeah, no.
Right? So, and that's the impasse we keep coming to. So, it really is, do you wanna allow it or not allow it? Right? So if we say no, we don't wanna allow it, that's that. If we say, okay, well, an application like that, we're looking at it the way they're doing it, then we make the adjustments. So that's really.
So that, we would still have that ability to say, well, even though it's prohibited, we can.
Listen, no matter what, they can always come here and ask for variance on this.
Right.
Nothing prohibits an applicant coming from before us saying, listen, we tried, this is the best we can do. But it would now be a, a variance that has to come before the board.
And in the concept, at least what I saw, they were proposing the EV in the surface parking lot. So they are addressing this. That's what I saw.
Where was the surface parking lot?
It's, it's.
No, it's the.
It's the lower level.
Right, but wasn't there a surface area shown?
No.
Parking on, on the very low level, which will have a concrete fire rated, concrete.
Okay.
Yeah, with more parking above.
And then.
There's no residential or, or anything else.
And then there's, there's green space above that.
Yes.
Yeah.
And that makes sense to me, what they did there, it makes a ton of sense.
Should we incorporate that into?
My preference is to, to leave it and let it be a variance by because if there's nothing directly above this space, but six feet over, there's an apartment, technically there's nothing above this, I don't want that. And that's, you know, my personal belief.
Okay.
You know, if it's 40, you know, if it's 80 feet away and it's a giant parking deck, well maybe, you know, but also to look at, you know, and I didn't wanna get into the nitty-gritty on these plans, but are those EVs now blocking the access to the fire department from getting into the building or into the parking deck?
No.
And again, I don't wanna get into it and ask, but those are things that I think we can look at if they wanted to bear.
And I think to the point, the, one of the thought processes we had with allowing this to come, you know, doing that where we say you, they can come before the board, right? Is because we wanna be able to look at these unique situations. And what are they doing to address it? And do we feel that there really is no other option for them? I think the once, my personal opinion is, once we start opening up an ordinance and allowing it, now it allows everything. And we lose control of allowing what we feel is still a safe project based on this project specifically and everything they have done specifically with this project.
Yeah, Chris, I would just follow up that I, there's no perfect fix here.
No, there isn't, I agree with that.
But I think what the charge was to give guidance to the development community that something needs to be thought about. And that, this was, it's prohibited, but it would be a C variance and they can come and give the proofs and say, this works.
Especially as.
Right.
As things change, as, you know, fire blankets are no longer the right option and something else is, maybe it becomes easier, you know.
It would be no different like a parking variance, it's the same thing.
Yeah.
RSIS says 2.0, we're proposing 1.6 and this is why. The board hears those C variances all the time. I, I think that just to give clarity on, right now, it's silent. The ordinance that was on the, on right now, it gives no direction at all. And I think it, to give some direction, it might not be perfect, I understand exactly what you're saying, Chris, but I think some guidance versus no guidance is what's in front of the board.
And to that point, I think, you know, I've heard this across the state too, is that I feel from a planning board perspective, by us not giving guidance, we're doing the actual disservice not to the, not only the community, but to the developer.
Yeah.
Right? Not giving them something to refer to, to say, and then still that option, right? As with any other ordinance or other, other law that's out there, then come and ask for the variance.
Yeah.
So there is that always that end, but at least it gives them that guidance. And then by the time they come with that variance, I feel that they should have, well, they should, they will have to because they're gonna have to prove it, but proving that they really literally have done everything they can. And then it's left up to that board based on that application and that application only.
There you go.
Yeah, and that would, that would be the criteria or the, the standard they would have to meet because it specifically says it's prohibited.
Correct.
We know that's a much higher standard for granting deviations.
Thumbs up. Now, it makes sense, I, I like, I like how we're, we're taking a stance and then managing through variance. When you talked me through that, I was like, okay, that makes a ton of sense. So, all right, no, we're good.
Chris is a little creative, I mean, we're saying, we're thinking ideas of ceramic, something that.
You hit it right on the head, there's no perfect answer and by the time you get the perfect answer, you'd have 45 pages of like caveats, which.
And then I think we'd be strapbooting them even more.
Yeah, no, I get you there.
If you wait for a perfect answer, we'll get nothing accomplished.
Yeah.
And the cat will be out of the bag or you can't put the genie back in the bottle, which I think is what the pressing thing is, we have activities coming up and if you keep waiting, you're gonna reach the point, same argument, the town's 99% built out, it's too late at this point. Give some direction.
So is this ready to go to council?
Well, I was just about to say, are there any other comments?
I'd like to make a motion to send it to.
So I'm gonna just say that the, a motion, but with the one addition from Cara, where it says, you know, as determined by the board hearing the application. So we'll need a motion for that.
And you said the fire official is good with this?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, he's running up the board and met with.
Yep.
Robert Lynn at least three times regarding this. He's comfortable with it.
Good, all right. Good, all right.
So moved.
Second.
Andrea Dare.
Yes.
Chris Addicks.
Yes.
Art Akins.
Yes.
Larry Cleveland.
Yes.
Jason Kroska.
Yes.
Mayor Gallagher.
Yes.
Councilmember of room.
Yes.
Chairperson Warner.
Yes. Okay, I will just touch upon this, I, I didn't get a chance, I know John is not here tonight, I was gonna reach out to him. The improvement coverage subcommittee, Mike, have you seen any movement on that? I know that they were gonna go back and look at, see if there was other.
We haven't met.
So, what I'd like, I'm, I'm gonna reach out to John too, because I know he's been involved in this. I think we want, I wanna look at where we're at, and if we are pretty solid with where we're at, and we're gonna keep delaying it, then I think this is one of those, again, where I think, let's just get this through, get it through too, and then just kinda like how we separated the decks with the pool, I think we're at a point, because John had come up with for a, what we feel, and that's what we wanted to confirm, but I think for the majority of the issues that they're hitting in that POR to residential, we'll cover with that, and if, I'm gonna talk to him, and if we feel so, I'm hoping maybe at the next meeting, we can make that recommendation to get that, at least that portion of it, and then we can still revisit it, like, listen, we can still look at it, you know, it's not done, but I don't wanna keep holding that up, because we have gone back and forth, and I know the committee, it's a, you know, a timing issue too, so. And then the last, I know it's not on your agenda, but you did, did everybody receive the stormwater management? Okay, so, the stormwater management plan that is, the copy that was sent to you has already been reviewed by the environmental committee, so you can start reviewing it and looking at it.